The Board of Zoning, Board of Zoning Fields Board meeting dated August 30th, 2021, 7:00 PM. A roll call.
I'm Mike Schlosser, Noah Downrest is here.
Phil Kurviet is here.
And Scott Chieble is here. So we're doing a public hearing tonight. We've got two variances. We have a area variance. From Larry Henness at Ford Academy Street, or in a carport. And then we have a special use permit from Charles Mullins at Fifty and a Half, Tever Street. So I want to start with the first variant. So does somebody here represent the carport?
Larry Henness.
All right, can you just tell us what you want to do?
I'd like to put a twelve by twenty foot carport on my house. There are none on the back to put it. So I get a normal, I'm gonna drag it up front.
Do you have a diagram of that anywhere? I didn't see a diagram of it.
Yeah, there should be.
Is there one in here?
I don't think it was included.
Oh, was it? Huh.
Shucks. Okay, I have that over with the building permit application. This is stuck with it. Might you describe it a little bit more and I'll go get that. Shouldn't take more than a couple of minutes. Sorry?
And how big is the carport going to be?
Twelve feet.
Twelve feet. And how far, where will it be in relation to the road?
Does it go over your driveway or?
It's right in my direct, existing driveway now. It's, the front of it will be twenty seven feet from the road.
The front will be twenty seven feet from the road and over the driveway.
Now, there's an existing carport there. Is that yours as well?
Yeah, that's, it was there when I bought the place. It's on the other side of the lawn. Different, different driveway. It's a different driveway from that.
Are you referring to for the carport you wanted? Is that on the left side for the front of your house?
Yeah.
And it's sort of like the driveway is two parts with, looks like it would hold off our cars.
It'll be right directly from the house. And the reason I really needed it, I got a boat, I'm gonna put the boat in the car.
How like, so how far from the road is the existing carport?
How far away is the existing carport?
From the road.
From the road? Oh boy, that side is six feet. It's whole.
And where would the carport be in relation to the neighbor's side yard? Because the Yurt four must be like six is the next one over.
Yeah, her driveway, I have a hedgerow there, it has my driveway between her driveway and my driveway.
Yeah.
So I probably, this carport can be roughly, probably twelve feet from that hedgerow.
Twelve feet into your lawn?
Yeah.
And it's gonna, I'm looking at the diagram we drew. So it's gonna go right up against the house then?
It'll be close to the front of the house, the left side of the house if you're looking from the street. It'll be about three feet from the house.
The driveway goes past the house? Is that true? The blacktop on the left side of the house?
Yeah.
And the carport will not go over that little?
Yeah, two of the holes, we have to go through the blacktop, the other four are from the lawn.
Why aren't you putting it, I drove over there and looked at it. So I saw the driveway is down the left side of the house. I guess that part of the north side. Why aren't you putting it down there?
Why can't I put it on here?
Yeah.
I've got another carport down there already. If I put something down there, I won't, I won't be able to get into that carport.
Oh, I see.
Could you describe what's in that back carport?
Two carports, a tool shed, even, size of a tool shed. My long word or stuff like that.
So this, this new carport, it looks like you would still be able to drive to that. You would maintain enough width to get that current.
Any board members have any more questions? Want to make a motion to close just?
We need to move that open.
I think we, oh, wait, do we want to open it? Yeah. Oh, I gotta make a move to open it to, what?
Public comment.
Give the whole thing straight up or maybe by roll call? I don't know. We do need to open it to public comment here.
Yeah, we need to open the panel.
I'll move to open to public comment.
All right. All payers say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, now we're into the public comment section of the meeting. Does anybody on the public, does anybody here have any comments?
Yeah, no.
That's me.
Do I have a motion to close the public comment?
I'll make a motion to close the public comment.
One second?
Oh, one second.
All payers say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? What's your carries? Close, if we close the public comment section for this variant, someone open up for board discussion. Can we make any motion for that?
I don't think we need to make a motion for that.
Okay. Any questions? Do you, do we have any place else in the village, Tom, or somebody has two carports in their front yard?
Or even two driveways?
There's certainly some of two driveways. There's many with two accessory structures. And, you know, in my realm, it doesn't really matter between a carport and a shed and a gazebo for that matter. You know, as long as it fits the square footage requirements. So technically a carport, I don't know. Two carports, I don't know.
So in terms of this variance, we're giving a variance because this building is closer to the road.
Well, accessory structures can only occupy a rear yard. And as per the zoning ordinance, it gives the ZBA untold work to do.
So the variance within is not only, it's two-fold. It's two-fold. A variance for, we'd be varying, we'd be applying for a variance to the inside fifty feet of the road requirement and also grabbing his front yard.
Huh. I guess how I looked at it would just be one variance because it would be the variance for in the front yard. And then it would, unless it was a huge yard, have to be less than fifty feet. But that's an interesting point to bring up. So perhaps technically that's correct. I was just getting the tax map to get a better idea.
Yeah, I mean, I would say if it's two separate lines in the code, one standing has to be in the back of the yard and the other standing less than or more than fifty feet. I think that's two separate. And Tom, is there a calculation of lot coverage? Is that another requirement? And presumably it's fine. I'm curious, and then something that was analyzed.
I kept looking for a lot coverage maximum in the zoning ordinance and have not found one. Which is unusual because a lot of ordinances do.
Yeah, that's kind of.
How big is your lawn?
I don't really know.
It's fairly small. Let's see. Ninety-nine by one oh two.
How, how big is the carport in the back?
I'd say that's roughly.
Twenty-four by twenty?
Twenty by twenty.
Twenty by twenty?
That's a close shot in the carport.
That's a close shot in the carport.
So the carport itself is that thing?
Can you fit just one car at there or two?
Just one car.
I'm gonna start with a comment. I guess generally I'm very uncomfortable with this. I think that it's, I think it's unusual to have two driveways, let alone two carports, let alone in the front yard, let alone less than fifty feet. I, I think that the zoning code for better or worse is a code and, you know, what we're doing, we're asking, or we are authorizing that code to be broken, right? And I think that there are often times when it's really clear, you know, certainly small plots are good examples of where you may want to make that exception. But there's already two other existing carports. So I think it just seems, it seems gratuitous, I guess.
But, I mean, but if one of them is in the backyard, first off, right? So like if there were thirty carports in the backyard, there would only need to be a variance issued for one still, right?
Yeah, but I'm in a carport.
Well, who knows, you know, it's like taking the extreme ones yet.
Did I say one thing?
Mm-hmm.
Sure, right. So if it's a two-family home, but one of the carports is for a tenant.
Oh, yeah, but I mean, that would never work for a community. That would also be another great reason to have two driveways and also two carports.
It helps. It certainly helps. However, not everybody has the luxury of covering their car, right? That's, I don't think there's any requirement in the zoning code that a car needs to be covered, right?
Yeah, I mean, there's no requirement at a shed either, like.
My discomfort is mainly because we received this late today and there's a couple of, it feels like we had a couple of variances. And there's also the issue, I'm not quite the coverage thing and not quite sure now if I have a two-family home. I'm just a little uncomfortable with deciding on something without a little time to think about it. Without a little time to think. If it is a little more complicated than I thought it might be, that's my discomfort. And I don't think we have to rule, I don't think we have to decide that. We can defer, right, if we want?
Oh, yeah.
We can table it for another, another meeting if we wanted to.
I mean, the other point I would make too is like, as Tom pointed out, like if this was a gazebo, would you feel differently about it even though it's essentially the same exact thing? Like a gazebo and a shed and a carport are essentially exactly the same. You know what I mean? Like.
I'm kind of with Tom in terms of I don't care necessarily what's the use. I think the structure in the front yard really changes the character of that house. Because now all of a sudden, there's two things sticking off of the house. There's not going to be much house left, right?
Well, it's at the end of the house. It's not starting in the middle of it in the front. It's.
We read the third, this guy, that the new structure is directed front of it, yes, the left side of the house, but it's on the front of the house. It's not to the side of the house.
Mike, you have any thoughts?
It's a tough one. I mean, I can see the points brought up. That, you know, it will change sort of the presentation of the house and the street. The fact that, you know, this is, this is used by another family, one of the other carports, and it's sort of like you said, something new that you can think a bit more about it. And, and the reason to do the carport here is because both that you'd like to put there will not fit in the one in the back. Is that true? So.
So, I mean, is it, a carport is like a through, like you can drive through it all the way from front to back, correct? So like if you were to put a carport on the side of the house, it would still be possible to reach the carport in the back of the house?
Yes.
Well, because I didn't know if you got a parking lot down.
I mean, you might, you might have to move the boat out to get to the area, that's right.
This doesn't, this seems like it would be a inconvenience.
This is currently a parking area in front of that house. So the driveway is still wide and then you could drive down the left.
Where do you keep your boat at? Where do you keep your boat at?
We're in a net person area. We're on one foot to car.
Okay.
Tom, do we have any, anything in the code about the parking itself in the front yard?
Yeah, there's not supposed to be parking in the front yard, motor vehicle parking. I can.
So this house already has, I don't know, the existing carport is two cars, the existing driveway is double width, which in theory could rival four cars. I mean, in theory, you could already park six cars in the front yard. That alone is a variance. Isn't it?
I'm not sure how the existing carport was there. The times I've driven by haven't at least noticed anything look like a boat was parked there to be parked there.
Was, I mean, was the, I guess, like it is this way existing and didn't acquire a variance. Like, what year was the house built?
Yeah, what's like, like.
To do seventy-eight, the house is built.
It was seventy-eight or anything.
I think it was seventy-one was the last, the other one's on it. But there may happen to be a situation about parking in that zone.
Yeah.
Sure, right. But, but I don't know if that.
Well, we have, we can either vote on it or we can decide to defer to research whether or not we want, how many variances we really have here. Because I'm not, there's two and maybe even three in one for parking. We don't know for sure. So now those are the two options I see. It's either table the discussion or we vote on it.
So I want to add one other concern. So as, as a board, when we grant the variance, technically by law, we are not setting a precedent, right? We are supposed to be looking at each site individually and judging it on its merits. And having said that, I think it's a really hard thing to do, right? It's really hard for us to grant the variance in one situation and not consider similar situations that may come up in the future. And so my concern would be whether, whether you describe it as a precedent setting thing, you know, I think other neighbors are gonna say, hey, why do they get a variance? Why do they have four cars or four carports or three or a boat or whatever it is and or even just parking in front of it? I, I feel very uncomfortable with that, you know, that's gonna be, it's gonna put us in an awkward position. You know, and people might just be lying about for variances, I guess, to do this because.
Well, the, certainly the accessory structure.
Maybe there's a problem with the zoning code then or something like that, right?
Well, and that's the thing. So I, I happen to be sitting on the zoning agreement just coming, right? It's coming soon. And this is the type of thing that we're gonna be addressing and we haven't talked about it yet. We haven't addressed it. So that's another, that's a third option, right? We can, we can.
So.
Kick it down the road. Let's say root for the new zoning. Maybe it doesn't, but maybe the nature of that variance would be slightly different.
In section seven seventeen of the zoning ordinance, motor vehicle parking in front yard. In residential zoning districts, no motor vehicle parking or storage shall be permitted with any, within any front yard except within established driveways.
Except you have a driveway.
Yeah. So I'm assuming you didn't just build the driveway. It's been there a while. The house has been there since seventy-eight. So the fact that the parking.
You could just establish a new driveway if you wanted. I mean, there's, there's a parking lot in the front yard on Main Street, right, that is.
Several, actually.
Right, I mean.
It causes me no degree of consternation.
I know that we've gone before but that one in Moss, in fact, right?
So is there, I don't believe there's any current definition of a driveway in terms of how wide you're allowed.
Yeah, there's no building. Yeah, well, that's what we ended up with on West Main Street.
Yeah, so, but I do believe that that kind of thing is exactly what will be addressed in the new zoning because I think it is currently very big. And like I said, I, I think it would make more sense maybe to kick it down the road, get the new zoning. Maybe it's still a variance, but at least it's maybe under some, some.
So you want, you, when you say kick it down the road, you mean vote on this now or do we table the, we could, we could vote on, we could decide on the variance now?
Yeah, I don't know the legality. Are we allowed to vote? Let's say we voted no, can we come back with the same variance? Isn't, is there something double checkery thing or something?
I would, I would think that I think the kids, but once again, that's clerk knowledge stuff.
All the more reason maybe to table it.
Right, table it provision. For another meeting, we have to set by another meeting, have a discussion, more discussion about it? I don't want to pass to find out from Nick Clark what we need to do here. So do you have a motion?
Well, I, I've been doing a lot of talk, so I've been curious, maybe you can consider those.
Yeah. Wow. I mean, I kind of feel like this is not much different than any of the other shed variances that we've given. And as you said, like, not that I think that those have set a precedent, but I think that it's been in our purview to approve things like, or whatever, I mean, that's not the right word, but like, I think, I, I don't see any problem with, you know, having another carport in, in your driveway, especially if you're looking at, you know, their situation. They have a tenant that got, you know, a second driveway that they use. So, I mean, I think I would be okay with voting on it now. I mean, who knows? I don't know when the new regulations are gonna come out, but as you said, maybe it will change, maybe it won't, who knows? And they'll be back here, you know, later anyways.
Were any of you folks here, I think it was last year for the Salo Drive variance?
Yes.
So they had a carport and two accessory structures that had, I don't think any of it had ever been permitted or allowed. So we had to retro approve them, I guess. And it, you know, a combination of, okay, it's there, it's not a big, it's not a blight. You know, the part of the concern there was what kind of impact it would have on the neighborhood.
Yeah, I think that, I, I remember that vaguely.
Yeah.
But there are similarities.
Yeah. But this nice couple came and applied for it beforehand.
That's right.
Beats the, or did it now?
Well, and one, and one thing in, in their favor, of course, is that that it's an existing.
It was already there.
Yes.
Yeah.
You know, it's not like they're proposing to build a new driveway. And I think that's kind of.
Yeah, yeah. And also, I mean, like if they said they were putting a gazebo in the front yard that was closer than fifty feet to the road, like maybe we would feel more like it would prove it since they don't have two existing gazebos already, like, I don't know, you know what I mean? Like.
Yeah, I mean, I think I mostly worry about the, the house and the, you know, what it, what does it say? You drive, you drive down that street today and it isn't, I mean, it's all small cars parked in the front yard. I think almost the entire street from not sticking.
There are all tiny lots on that side of Academy.
Have cars in that, like, are on parking and it's in the front yard as well.
Yeah.
And interesting to note, on that side of Academy, the Ennis's house has the greatest setback of many of the houses. And it, it doesn't appear to be anywhere near fifty feet, but it's less, I can show you the tax map quickly, Mike.
Yeah, I got it.
Okay.
Mike, what are your thoughts?
No, I, I think that, I think I agree along the lines of what Phil had said or whatever. I don't think this is setting precedents because it is a pretty unique situation. And I think that it is, the driveway is already there. If it was a driveway and a carport, I think that would be a bit more significant. So that's sort of my, my take on that. I also think that it's not a standard, it's not the most common layout because we have two cameras there as well. So, I mean, we could go through the.
We could go through them, but once we do that, we commit it to either, I mean, we either table the discussion or we go, I think we either have to table the discussion or.
But we can still talk about them, right? In outline, right? We don't have to make an official ruling.
So let's talk about it.
So, sorry, before we do that, one other question for Tom. Do we know, and this may be different, but in my experience, if there are existing deficiencies with a lot, that sometimes those also have to be sort of recorded as another variance. So for example, the existing carport is in violation. So wouldn't it make sense, it's kind of a procedural thing, we're gonna do this and we're here. And I feel like didn't we kind of do that in Salo Drive? Kind of because, maybe that was a little different because they had never applied for a permit or whatever.
Yeah.
But that would seem to bring their.
It depends on when that carport was built and what, under what zoning conditions.
Oh, it was built, I think if it was built in seventy-nine or seventy-six, like, who knows if they had a fifty-foot requirement then, I don't know. You know.
I, I just, I raised it because I, I just wonder if that's another potential reason to maybe research this a little bit before we.
Well, one of the sticky roads you're going on with that is in the village, you might imagine, there's more than a few pre-existing non-compliant structures.
Sure.
And, you know, some predate the first zoning ordinance, some are happened during it. And retroactively going, okay, we gotta make this is compliant, make sure this is compliant or not. That would be a full-time job for several years.
Yeah, yeah. In this case though, I was just thinking because it may have happened after the zoning, and if the zoning rules are set, it's. and if the zoning code was in effect, it's it's my understanding of legally non-conforming is it was built before the zoning code existed. And I think that's a little different.
Yeah.
In this case where legal was maybe built illegally, in certain, therefore, it's not being legal non-conforming, it's an illegal non-conforming.
Wait, wait, what are you saying, that like, it can only be a legally non-conforming thing if it happened before they enacted any zoning?
That's my understanding of it.
So what about, like, so you're about to update the zoning code and if certain things don't match the new code, does that mean that they're illegal?
You look at the code that is embraced at the time that it was constructed.
Right.
Like, I think, and I'm not aware, and that's my understanding, is that we actually, we have to go back. Like, the village has to keep all the old codes and actually go back.
Right.
So in Image Made, the Tonkins County Assessment Database, they have a section for improvements. And there's a roof canopy built in nineteen ninety-three and a covered porch in nineteen seventy-eight. And that's all they've listed.
And so the roof canopy in nineteen ninety-three sounds like the front, the existing carport. Just like looking at the.
Look, do you folks have any idea about when that carport was built? Okay.
It hasn't looked that old yet. It's nice, it looks like a nice, pretty modern, it's not, it's not a bad condition. Ninety-three, it's about right.
Well, let's just go through these now, to see if it helps us. So number one is whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to the right properties be created by the brand of the area variance.
I think it's subjective, but I would say yes.
I agree with you, it is subjective, and I would say no in particular, since there are several neighbor signatures in there as well. And, you know, like, yeah, I don't know, I guess, I don't think.
Would say, I think it's close, um, certainly. It's not a good, see it being a change. But it is sort of further in on on that one side of the driveway. And I think that the neighbors are okay, that's a plus as well.
I would say, I I would agree with no, I mean, I I think sort of yes, I mean, I I understand the neighbors, you know, aren't, they're not worried about it, but I I'm just concerned about having two carports in the front yard, that's all, you know.
Okay, number two, whether the benefits offered the applicant may achieve by some other method feasible for the applicant pursuit.
So I I do wonder why the boat couldn't go in the existing carport. And again, with the logic that it's kind of a lux- luxury, right? I mean, not everybody has a covered car, but a covered boat, so why, why does that, why does that allow us to break the law? Speaking as someone who doesn't have that garage or anything.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, but I mean, is it, is it for us to decide who can have that luxury and who can't?
I think it is.
I think it would literally is. I mean, well, I mean, I think it's for us to decide if if something is reasonable to put in a certain neighborhood or to break the code, but whether or not that thing is a luxury or not is sort of irrelevant in in the cracker scheme of like, making the decision.
Well, here's an example that I want to throw out there. I think if you could make an argument that the second unit is too difficult to rent because there's no place to park and therefore we need to park in the front yard, sure, I can see sort of an economic decision to do that. To then take it to the next level and say, we can't rent this second unit unless we actually provide a covered parking space. If you can make that argument and convince us, sure.
But there's, there's no requirement for a financial argument when applying for the uh, new variance variance or uh, variance variance, right? So there's no like, they don't have to prove any financial hardship.
Correct, I'm just using it as an example of this, it's it's an argument.
They would make it way more like, yeah, I mean, I agree, that would, that would sort of be a, certainly would be a much better argument than like, you know, we just want it, but in this case, like, you know, New York State says, we just want, maybe it's okay.
Well, what I, you know, in terms of the benefit, the benefit, they're trying to have a covered garage, a part, covered space for the parks. So they can't do that without building a carport. However, they could also, if they didn't want to get the boat in the back, if the boat wasn't, you know, around the back of the house, you, they could be built on the side of the house and, you know, not in the front yard. So I think it can be, uh, there is all, there are alternatives. Not everybody has, you know, that's, we're not writing the code, we're just trying to interpret what the intent is and try to keep things somewhat consistent throughout the village. Mike, do you have a comment on that one?
Just, uh, it's, I don't know, it's, I don't know, I think that, I think that it'd be kind of difficult to, a lot, I mean, I just don't have experience in the world we're down now.
Okay, number three, whether the requested variance variance is substantial.
Yeah, this matter stopped us before, but I think it is.
Yeah, I think it probably is substantial, I mean, you know, it's taking up sort of half of the driveway space there.
It's, you don't end up being.
We're asking for more than, more than, almost percent, fifty percent, probably fifty percent variance.
It's on in front of the house and it's the floor of the front left side, so some changes.
Can I make one comment on that? On the left side of the house, it's quite a steep incline going down to the bed, so.
Carport on the left side of the house, really wouldn't work anywhere.
Number four, whether the proposed variance would ever affect or impact on physical environment, environmental conditions in the area of the district.
I don't know if they can tell me this case, I mean, indeed, there's physical environmental conditions, I think it's probably not much of an impact.
I agree.
And then five, whether the life difficulty was self-created, which consideration shall be relevant to the decision of board of choice, but shall not necessarily conclude the granted variance.
Yes.
Yes, it's definitely self-created. In the sense that we want to have a carport with a reasonable carport. Uh, and there might be other alternatives. So having said all of this, now through this, how we feel now?
I mean, I'm, I'm happy to wait and think about it longer, like, I don't, you know, like, I don't think we have to make a decision tonight, and that's totally okay. And I think, you know, like, I definitely appreciate your comments, you know, like, you know, I can get there certainly. I mean, I mean, I'd be happy to wait and think more, you know.
I think waiting is good, I think it's kind of an overall decision here, um, of what we confirm as well.
No one?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I I agree, waiting is is good. Um, I I think I know how to vote today, and I don't think that's gonna change necessarily, but that that may not mean anything, like, in my past.
What, do you know, do you know when the new zoning code is sort of going to be approved? Like, is there a?
No, I would say by the end of the year, who would be in front of, um, the village trustees.
Yeah.
How long that goes through that process, I don't know, but I would, I think the goal is to get it as quickly as possible. So it could be spring.
Yeah.
Well, do we have a motion?
Well, I move to table.
For how long? Do you wanna actually schedule?
Well, I think a regular meeting, I mean, every, next month.
Yeah, it's a regular meeting.
Or or even whatever, since we're all flexible, I mean, it's whatever makes sense for the next meeting. And I think with Tim here and with, um, Ted, that would be useful.
Yeah. I agree, okay, so next, next meeting, like, next scheduled meeting, like, when is our scheduled meeting?
I think we have a motion to table the discussion until the next, uh, scheduled zoning meeting, I'm not sure what's, first Tuesday of, uh, whatever, whatever, the regular meeting. I hope that never actually happens on that day, you know, the new regular meeting.
I'll second it.
We have second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose. Motion carries, we're gonna table this discussion of the variance for the carport with Larry Miss on Fourth Avenue Street to our next, um, zoning meeting.
Could I ask the names?
I'm not sure.
Yes, I'm trying to look it up and I'm not getting signal, which is not my first choice.
Within thirty, yes, let's say that, right? Within, within. Well, we've already made the decision, so we're just, um, moving on. We need a maximum motion to oppose this portion of the hearing, right?
I think so, it's both there.
Okay. Well, okay, so the next item on the agenda is special use permit for Charles Mullum, fifteen and a half, UBS. Special use permit in respect to long-term artist studio, the new property in the residential zone area. Okay, thank you.
Yep. I don't know what that, what the rule is, I mean, I think we're already, I think we probably have to talk about it and still open it to public comment?
Yeah, yes. So you're presenting, you're representing, um, Mr. Mullum. Would you say your name and where you live and then just talk about what you just wanted to do?
I'm Hannah Harper, um, I live at eighteen UBS. I would like to, uh, put a artist studio into Mr. Mullum's, one of Mr. Mullum's existing buildings, so it's currently empty. It's got a four-foot square feet, it's just a tiny little piece, but one building. My understanding is that in residential zone, uh, artist's studio and even a artist's studio in particular is allowed. The only thing that I'm, that is not allowed is a kiln, this, this side of that, which is not very large. It's a, I think, I think a kiln or a flat, if I'm not mistaken, it's like.
Yours is eleven, I think it's eight kilowatts, it's the.
Yeah, it's eight, more than eight thousand kilowatts of kiln area.
So that's sort of like a hobby size, really.
How many of the physical sizes of the kiln, just like, you're asking, like, is it, like, this big or like?
About this big, it's about this tall. This big, it's, it's a big, very insulated oven, it's in fact, it's much thicker than your average, like, kitchen stove.
Do you say it's electric?
It's electric, yep. So I have two of them, none of them will never run the same, in fact, they can't run at the same time. One of them is, I think, like, ten fifty kilowatts and one is eleven fifty. So it's just, it's just a slightly larger.
Are you gonna sell powder in there or just make it?
Just make it.
And limited retail is a permitted use.
Correct, yeah. It is not my intention to do so, but I, my understanding that should I, yeah, that that is not allowed.
It's for that property, you're saying?
Yeah, well, an R1, so.
With a special use permit or just?
No, just any R1 property, you can have, uh, what is it, select commercial uses, and this is a artist's studio, and it falls into that, and they have some restrictions under artist studios, that's where the eight thousand KW came up for the kiln size.
Yeah, I'm really surprised that we have that level.
Well, it's, it's surprising that there's that level, and I guess it's not surprising that probably nobody thought into, you know, because it really is a hobby size, it's not like, uh, artist, well, you know, if it's a artiste who's, you know, just doing stuff for their own friends and family, sure, but uh.
So do we, do you know, since I know nothing about this, do you know, like, is there a next level up that's not a hobby size? That's like, I mean, where?
Not, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, and I found that to be this, this, we rewrite this number, it feels like this number, you know, changes. If what you can buy is already at eleven and a half, maybe it's a little like twenty, I I don't know nothing about this, so it's just kind of various.
So what's?
Sort of what to the future, never to project that.
Yeah, either not be so specific and just pull some of that language out or.
Maybe that would make more sense.
Yeah, yeah, it seems very common.
More detailed.
Yeah.
So, so this variance is specifically just to allow a larger kiln size, is that correct?
Yep.
Seems like it.
And even though, so like, can I just ask about, like, that property was granted a special use permit for that business, is that correct?
Yeah, because the business is more commercial in nature than.
Does that property operate under commercial use and can that, can this term fall under that special use?
No, the special use permits are very specific.
Yeah, it's only limited to the.
Like, if the can was there for five years and then she left, it would, it would vary.
Right, actually, there, so, Tim and I were having this debate this afternoon about, are they permanent with the property or are they, uh, renewable every year?
Because I remember Mills Paws would have kept their special use permit had they sold one can of, and, and couldn't transfer to the new user because they lost it, not because the special use permit can't transfer to them.
In less of a year or something like that.
Like, I think it has to be under that use and once it stops being under that use, then it's not.
But they can always come back.
They can ask for it again, that's true, but, but, you know, I mean, Mills Paws operated there for, you know, like.
There was some pretty good neighborhood pushback about when this new business wanted to come in, how many trip, trips a day are gonna be on the trucks, how much noise is gonna be generated? Will they be machinery running, lights, all that, there's some very concerned folks around it.
Just let me understand, not physically, what I see here is that especially use permit is asking about an artist's studio, the kiln, we're not really, that's just part of the studio, it's actually an artist's studio that we're doing special use permit for. But the kiln is.
That's a lot, an artist's studio is a lot.
And it doesn't say that, it doesn't say that here, we should be more specific. Because it doesn't say that, it says for an artist's studio, but starting studio is already permitted, so it's really.
That's correct, that's probably what I was advising Hannah early on and she was right.
So we need to be very specific for, you know, what we're doing here.
And the, like, so the installation of the kiln, like, is there actually, like, a, like, I know a wood stove has a very specific, like, it's this close to the wall, it needs, you know, shelving on the stove, shelving on the wall, is there? Is there guidelines that you follow for that, and you follow a kiln, and this is like manufacturer's guidelines or this is like New York State guidelines?
So manufacturer's guidelines, you can just put the wall.
Okay.
And the walls in this particular space are all concrete and the floors are concrete.
Yeah, okay.
Where is it, just curious, which part of the, like, the old hardware store?
It's in the nails and screws.
Are there any other changes that you would need to make where you replace the kiln? I mean, is there any renovation, additional renovation of all?
Yeah, so there's a hole that needs to be put in the hall. So it changes, like, no part of the building footprint, it changes, there's, it's gonna change nothing, really, just passing, so. Have a slightly larger kiln and in, just talking about setting precedent, there is a ceramic studio downtown on Main Street in an old house, um, that's running a kiln, literally the same size, in actually much less state conditions. So there is definitely a precedent set already.
Does that, studio on this question is permanent for the kiln?
Well, the guy I needed, if it, you said it's on Main Street?
Yeah.
So it's not, it's not under the residential zone.
But isn't the residential zone?
In residence.
I guess it was.
Nobody would have known they would have put it in there.
Yeah, I mean, the commercial for the Main Street is.
Well, the one I'm thinking of is probably before the twenty. Well, the one I'm thinking of is probably before the twenty twelve ordinance.
Oh, yeah, exactly before that.
So that would, and I surely doubt that the, uh.
Well, no, definitely.
Yeah.
Well, do I, um, any more questions before I open up the topic discussion?
I don't have any further questions.
Okay, your motion to open the up the public discussion. Uh, I'm going to open the meeting to public comment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Uh, motion carried. Anybody have comments?
No. I'm going to close on the comments.
Okay, all, uh, if you're, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried, public comment section, session is over. Okay, for discussion.
Do you mind if I make concerns? I mean, I think this is going into, I mean, I think this is great, I think it's going to do a commercial, what was a commercial space, I think it would now. It sounds very basic.
I think it's great to make use of that. That'll be a good idea to make.
I agree, the only thing I would comment is if we're writing this resolution.
We need to be very specific.
We gotta be very specific, but I don't think we should say eleven point five, because I know nothing about that. What if this breaks, you want to buy one that's twelve, right? You know, I don't want you to have to come back.
So what should the word say specifically?
Let's just work that out right now.
Yeah, that's what I'm.
Well, what is super clear too, like, I mean, if you make it like forty-five kilowatts.
That's what I'm saying, I have no idea.
I mean, what's the sort of top of what would work?
I was actually, do you know what the brand is of the kiln?
Yeah, it's, um, it's called Eller Net. Um, but then, in addition to that, you know, the product coming says nothing about what fuel you're using. There are many different fuels that fire kilns, um, and so it's not addressed like that at all.
Right.
Um, I mean, it seems to be like, to try to get down to the nitty gritty, it's, yeah, I'm totally, I, I don't know. I mean, it feels like if an artist's studio or artist's studio is allowed with a kiln in other parts of the village, we just be able to say, hey, boom, I don't know.
Yeah, I I agree, I I think the issue is that we we have this weird code, so we want to make sure that we are protected, you know? Not having to go through it again for a special use permit. That's, I've seen all of that. Does anyone have any thoughts about how to?
Well, I was just gonna, you know, we just, if we just leave it general and just say, uh, a lot of artists' studio within the property, uh, to have a kiln sufficient kiln.
I mean, I think that would be a reasonable rate of kiln sufficient for a single potter to use or something, I don't know, does that make sense in that, or?
I don't want to put in a kilo lot, that just seems too.
But is that, is it because of other fuel, I don't know. Isn't that the variance that we're grabbing?
And what if you wanted to, like, if you wanted to put a gas kiln on the outside or something like that, would that be then a separate use permit? Like, this is only for an electric kiln, right, this is for like?
Yeah, it's.
I would just say, you could just be very specific, since this is what the variance, we just say, to ensure variance for the two small electric kilns which operate at ten point five kilowatts and one at eleven point five kilowatts, so just leave it that, that's what we're asking, right?
Well, for a special use permit, Hannah, do you feel like you would be backed in a corner, saying we would allow these two kilns at the specific sizes?
I mean, ultimately, they will be replaced.
Well, but would they be replaced in the same size, or you would been, you know, gazing through catalogs?
I think so, like, an electric kiln, like, we can't, you know, there's a cap on the size. I don't know. I would be very comfortable if it just said, you know, electric kiln, because then, you know, smaller, or whatever. Mine are, mine are sort of like, they're not as big as you can, but they're pretty near.
And you're okay with that, that fuel to, to a large amount?
I mean, it's certainly not preference, but if that is what makes you all comfortable, I mean, I don't anticipate using another fuel source right now. Um, that may change, I, I just like, and I guess I could come back.
Come back and give another use frame.
Well, I mean, to be fair, there's nothing in the zoning that says I can't have gas kilns. Um, there's nothing in the zoning that says I can't have electric kilns. Um, it only says that I can't have a electric kiln above a certain size.
So weird.
Well, I mean, I propose to just keep it simple, and just say electric kiln, and, but.
I guess I just don't understand how it's a variance to what the code is saying. I mean, it's not actually taking in action, because the variance is the size of the kiln, it's not the fact.
Well, this isn't a variance, this is a special use permit. So we could just permit using two kilns of this size, that's why I was talking about not wanting to back you into a corner.
Right.
Um, two electric kilns of this size, uh, your special use permit would be that. Um, they're good for a year, so next year, if you want, well, I'd like to, you know, get a, uh, you know, a coal burner. And of such and such BTU, you could come up and then, and, uh, say, we're also, coal, what's with you, lady? But, um.
Is that family?
What's that?
Am I mistaken, though, like, it really, I don't, I agree with anything in the document about different fuels.
There's, it's true that, yeah, that, so the only restriction in that is the electric of above the size. It's pretty wacky, but.
So you could build, you could build a propane.
A nuclear one.
Kiln, you could build a nuclear kiln that's a million kilowatts.
Well, when you start getting to that size, you'd probably get, uh, other agencies involved, but.
So if I could just go out, uh, just take the stand, say, instead of, we we include a number, but instead of saying eleven point five, and just kind of make up a number and say fifteen.
I would say that's not the guidance.
Okay, but that's the problem, is I don't know what the jump is from this size, this kind of hobby size, to something that's considered much more industrial.
Personally, if it, if it would be, sorry to just be interrupting, but I would just say an electric kiln is not ours.
I would agree with that.
Maybe it's semantics, but I don't see how that is what we're, I guess, since it's not a variance.
Like, it's a special use, and we're allowing her to use an electric kiln, that's.
Well, the special is, it's a large size.
I mean, or maybe if you want to be specific about it, we could say that she's allowed to use this, uh, kiln that's larger than eight thousand watts, or whatever the.
Yeah, I actually, I think that's, we do, we just have to state in the resolution that we are allowing it to be larger than. And just leave it at that?
I think that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah. Maybe we add some language of for hobby use, or sort of to require, or some, some other way, but I don't know, it doesn't matter.
I think, yeah, just larger than.
Okay, so we're going to say for allowing an artist's studio in this property residential zone area, including a kiln, the electric kiln, uh.
Larger than.
Larger than the allowed eight thousand.
Larger than. All right, before we close the board discussion, there is four, there's a task for special use permits that nobody, Hannah would provide us, but she didn't provide us that, you guys know there's, there's four.
Are you sure it's not four?
There's four.
For special use permit?
For special use, it's different, it's different.
The area variance has four, right, but not the.
No, area variance has five. I think it's four, there's actually another, um.
Are you asking if we know it?
I'm asking if you have that, if you guys have that or know that, because I don't have that, because nobody would be on the material condition, so.
I can look it up.
I'm trying to find it here before we close the board discussion. Oh, maybe it's in the zones out here. All sides, everything is here. Okay, well, here we are, we can go through the, uh, there's three things in here, we can read through these.
Might go through them now?
Yeah. Okay, the location, size, use, the nature, intensity of the operation, these things we have to consider. Uh, location and size of the use, the nature and intensity of the operation, the size and site in relation to it. Location and site in respect of existing or future streets. Shall be such and will be harmony with the orderly development of the district. Location, nature, high buildings, walls, fences, will not experience appropriate development, I don't think this really applies right here, but, um, these are those things to consider. Another thing is, operation in connection with a special use shall not be more objectionable in nature than nearby properties by reason of noise, fumes, vibration, flashing lights, increased traffic, or any other objectional, objectionable reasons than it would be the appearance of any property. So maybe that's where it applies here, because we're talking about a kiln. Um, and then see if the special use, so we can perform to the village with true and fair progress plan. So I don't think there's just a task we just have to consider, those factors.
Yeah, I I mean, I do think it it sort of works within all of these factors, right? It's not going to discourage the appropriate development and use of adjacent land, it's, you know, uh, I don't think that, uh, it's going to be objectionable to the neighborhood in terms of noise or fumes, and I don't think that, well, I guess we should go through them one by one, maybe.
Or like, we just like, I don't know if we need to, but.
I think you don't need to, but not one by one thing, so.
I'm very confident.
Yeah, Mike?
I'm, yeah.
What motion?
Probably, I mean, the motion to close our round to.
Oh, we have to make a motion to close?
I think we do, I think we did.
We closed the public comment, so we were just.
We're making a motion, yeah.
A motion to approve or not approve?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the use permits based on, um, the language that we've had.
I'll read it while. I'll second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Uh, motion carries. So we're granting a variance, special use permit, for Charles, Charles Mullins', um, a request for an artist's studio with his property, in residentially zone area for the, for the, the artist's kiln, which is larger than the zoning, for the zoning limits.
The zoning limit, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, motion to, Jerry?
I second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Hey, ladies and gentlemen, Jerry, thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you, Hannah.
Do I need, like, is there a, you don't need to weigh in on anything else?
No.
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 And what was the, uh, on your part? It's good for, you're about to get this approved again?